Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And then before we sit down, we would like to pause for a moment of silence after the Pledge of Allegiance for Mrs. Laurie Berthalet, who passed last week. And she was a great help to a lot of departments in this town.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Couple of announcements tonight. The Finance Committee's public hearing on the financial articles that appear on the special and annual town meeting warrants will be held this Wednesday evening, May 6th at 7:00 PM. If you have any questions, concerns, or comments about the budget, the Board encourages you to attend the public hearing if possible. Please don't wait until the town meeting. Next is the special and annual town meetings are scheduled for Monday, May 11th, beginning at 7:00, uh, 6:30 PM at the Millville Elementary School. And third is the town currently has job openings for a part-time building inspector and part-time Assistant Animal Control Officer. If interested, please contact the Town Hall Business Office. The Office Secretary has application packets. If you, if you can print one from your town's, or you may print one from the town's website. The Board, and then last is the Board wishes to wish everyone a Happy Moms' Day this Sunday. Don't forget. That's it. Next, we have Mr. Paul McKenzie here from CM Geeks Incorporated, IT Services, I believe, is here. Would you like to come up?
You can come sit right here.
Okay.
Come relax.
Helen, just several companies to reevaluate.
Yep, very, very relaxed here.
I was one of the companies, I believe, were favorite. So, we support Hubbardson, Dungeon Complete Town, Hubbardson, who supports a dozen PDs, we support a regional dispatch center, and the rest of our company, a few much small businesses, state entrance, county services, parental services, those types of businesses. We focus on small entities, give them high value, and just try to do business well. So we're casual, we try to do business casually. We're here to help, we're here to build long-term relationships, which I think is one of the things Helen liked to hear is, just really a fixed fee with very high quality services. And it's my overall pitch. From there, I'll open up to questions.
How long have you been in this business?
Since 2007. I've been in the IT business since 1982. I worked for large corporations, got kind of tired of the way corporations were going and decided to go out on my own.
Good, good for you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so I, I was, I like the fact that you handled towns that already are in the regional dispatch. I know we have, we don't have as many issues as we did in the beginning, but it's good.
It's a challenge.
That was a good thing for us. And I'm sure Helen's told you that some of our equipment is a little bit older.
Yep.
So, so we just, we were very interested in, you know, experience with that type of...
I mean, you're typical of a small town, so, I mean, you know.
And then, you know, response time is also important.
I mean, we try very hard to make sure calls get answered when we get calls. Rarely, you'll go to voicemail, and I was talking with Helen, it seems like when the phone rings, you get three, four calls, boom, boom, boom. And the rest of the day, you're sitting there saying, where is everybody? So on those occasions, you know, you might go to voicemail, but we get right back to you.
So Paul, so you like, you gotta help, that's, that's first call. Break fix two, is that part of it?
First caller is, it's myself, my wife, and my son. And we're all capable of supporting this environment. So you call somebody on the phone, you'll get somebody that's gonna work with you and attempt to fix your problems.
Now, is break fix part of this as well?
Break fix from a software standpoint, not from a hardware standpoint. From a hardware standpoint, we rely on your warranties. If you don't have warranties, certainly we'll swap a disk or something, but if there's something wrong with the motherboard, we're gonna rec, especially if it's a four-year-old machine, we're gonna recommend you purchase a new PC, it's just not worth it.
Right, right, okay.
Depending where a disk swap, I mean, you have a disk drive that goes on a ten-year-old machine, and I say, you know, it's just not, don't do this to yourself. We're gonna be here next month, you're not gonna be happy.
And you're familiar with all the softwares this time around?
And Mr. McKenzie has reviewed the contract, and he doesn't have any problems or questions, so I'd just be looking for a vote from the Board to authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the Board.
Some votes? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's great to meet you.
Thank you for coming on. All while you're here, you wanna sign your copies, and then I can get the board to sign, and then I can send you whatever you want.
Okay, well, I've seen you off the date, right?
No, the date's at the beginning, so just your signature's fine. Great, thank you so much, that's it. Okay, and that's it.
Okay, approval of minutes, April 21st, 2015, at 6:00 PM. Mr. Baker was only one absent.
Make motion to accept the motions. Uh, they accept, uh, they accept the minutes, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have April 21st, 2015, at 7:00 PM.
Second motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And I do have warrants. First is the payroll deduction warrant for the pay period ending May 4th, in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-six, oh, I apologize, that's not the payroll deduction. Payroll deduction warrants. Four thousand three hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. I have the vendor warrant dated May 4th, 2015, in the amount of fifty, five hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred sixty dollars and forty-five cents. The payroll warrant for the pay period ending May 2nd, 2015, for thirty thousand six hundred eighteen dollars and eighteen cents. And on a separate warrant is the Green Community expense, this is, comes out of the grant money, for fourteen thousand seven hundred forty-six dollars even. What was the large amount in the vendor? I believe it's a school payment.
School or wheel elevator?
Uh, BMR.
BMR.
Four ninety-seven.
Four ninety-seven with BMR, okay. Like five hundred thousand, we don't drop that every week.
No.
Just related, with, with, green energy money voucher. They, they request coming to Town Hall, we assign the program manager to do a walk-through to the town. They said, we don't have enough lead time to get to the school, but we're looking at the rest of the building. This is the, this is my motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the, uh...
What is it, sir?
The warrants.
I'm a warrant. We already went through this. Minutes.
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, town boards and officials, we have Gary Fagan, Animal Control Officer. Gary?
Mr. Chair, can I approach Mr. Fagan?
Yeah, sure. Thank you for coming, Gary. So, I, I just want, you know, I, I invited you not to be in a hot seat, but I, I wanna know if, you know, what we're gonna do about this part-time animal control, if you've had any luck finding somebody.
Well, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to hire somebody now.
Yeah, okay.
We've been through applicants so far.
Yep, yep. Well, I mean, and we understand you're not available during the day, and...
No, I understand.
And that's totally, we, that's ma, that was made clear in the beginning of your appointment, and we all know that, so there's no...
Yeah, we're gonna fill a void, you know, I mean...
Yeah, and it's no fault of yours, you have to have a full-time job, too.
It's unfortunate, I've gone through as many as I...
At some point during the day with, you know, people working, so...
It's unfortunate, I've gone through as many as I have over the years.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, and I know, it's very important that we can, you know, you know, anybody that's listening, is interested in, in animal control, you know, every time our police department, you know, has to pick a dog up, or, or whatever animal, bring it to the vet, kennel, or even just lock it up in, in the jail here, for the day until you're able to pick it up, it's, it's time that the officer is, you know, out of district, or, you know, tied up with, with the animal issue, and, and we can't ignore an animal issue, because if we did, and somebody were to get bite, then the town would be liable, so, you know, so it's, you know...
So you think you have two good applicants that would be able to assist you during the time that you're unavailable, so far, out of those two?
I would say this is definitely, you know...
You have a definite opportunity.
We have two, two applicants, and one of them is, seems very qualified.
Okay, cool, and it will fill that void?
Yes. You know, I mean, once they find out all the particulars of the job, you know, it's...
Yeah, but it's encouraging, to get someone.
I mean, you know, there's a lot of aspects to the, to the job, the police just don't, don't, don't do, you know?
Yeah, it could...
Somebody's gotta be available to handle everything.
It's disconcerting to me that the police department handles the majority of the daytime calls. I don't see a police officer transporting vets and...
You know, I, I, I'm the one, I approached Helen before it was even, you know, anything was ever said to me about, you know, getting somebody. As soon as I phoned out my, although my higher assistant wasn't coming back. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna get out of work and have a mountain of calls myself to have to...
Oh, absolutely.
To deal with, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
You're what I get.
Well, no, it doesn't get easier.
The application packets are on Chrissy's desk, it's on the town website, it's posted in the Town Hall. I think we put it at the library, and maybe at George's or the post office. We were gonna put it in the Worcester TNG, but then Gary said he may have a couple of possibilities, so we're gonna hold off on the TNG and see how these two work out. If, if neither of these works out, then we'll get it in the TNG as well.
I mean, you can post it as well, I mean, you know, until, until somebody's actually hired, I don't see any reason to hold anything back.
Yeah.
Is there a date, or is it just open until filled?
Open.
I just have a couple of questions. And I certainly apologize to the Board of Selectmen and Mr. Fagan about what I'm gonna say and what I'm gonna state. But, the reason why I asked to sit with Mr. Fagan was, in regards to two emails sent out by the Executive Secretary regarding Mr. Fagan being here. So I do have some questions for Mr. Fagan. Mr. Fagan, were you requested to be here, or did you demand to be here?
I, I was requested to be here.
Okay.
And then you asked as well.
Can I finish, please, my presentation? I have received two emails from the Executive Secretary to the Board of Selectmen, and I'm gonna paraphrase and put words in your mouth, Mr. Fagan. Were you extremely upset and frustrated that I had gone to the kennel to check in the condition of two dogs?
I wasn't, I was always just concerned about, about losing the kennel, because we have lost a kennel before, okay? So I was concerned about losing the kennel.
Were you, let me just paraphrase. Were you so upset and so frustrated you had a lot more to say tonight, rather than Mrs. Cal, Helen Coffin wanted to put out an email? What do you have to say that's so extremely upsetting and frustrating as to what I did when I checked on the condition of two dogs? Is that troublesome to you? I mean, you're here tonight because we asked you to be here.
Right, right.
So you're not here because you demanded to be here, is that correct?
That's correct. Initially, I was, I was told that they wanted to...
Okay, and you're not here because you're extremely upset or frustrated what I did? I'm just, and these are the words, you can read the public emails. Are you here for that reason? Okay, so I'm asking the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, how this fictitious nonsense is disseminated to the Board of Selectmen, when Mr. Fagan's here in front of you denying what he said to Mrs. Coffin? And I'll continue. In the email, Mrs. Coffin questions my ability and what law I'm gonna apply to investigate any such complaint. Since when is she my boss, or do I have to answer to her regarding what law I'm gonna apply? My powers come on the, on chapter forty-one, by the way, and the law I'm applying is chapter two seventy-two, cruelly animals, and chapter one forty-one, releasing the dog within seven days. Now, this isn't something that he said, she said. These are two emails. You can read them, you all received them. So what is this nonsense about what Mr. Fagan said? He doesn't appear to be frustrated and upset to me. Read the emails, you have them. That's two different stories. One's the truth, one is a fabricated lie. And that's what this is. It attacks my integrity, which is a bunch of baloney. Since when do I have to report to her to tell her what application of law I'm gonna apply to investigate possibly a cruelly the animal complaint, or dogs being released within seven days? So I'll just give you a little bit of information prior to my statement. On the twentieth, we found two animals in the town of Millville running loose. We found the animals, one resident jumped into Mansfield Pond, saved the dog, called us, we retrieved the animal, we had two animals in the police station for the day. We fed them, that's what I usually do. I purchase the food myself, I feed the dogs, 'cause that's what I do. We notified Gary, he came to the station, picked one dog up, correct me if I say anything incorrect, and we transported the other one at his request to a kennel located in Utbridge. Now, what we do from that point is, when we find missing animals, we post them on Facebook in case somebody lost their dog. We have great success doing that. So the following day, and the day after that, town residents called the kennel and asked if they could adopt the dogs. Within seven days, they were told by the kennel, the dogs are gone, they've already been adopted. Well, that's in violation of chapter one forty. Then there was another posting on Facebook, whether it's correct or not, it was there that said the kennel is not sanitary. So that fits in the description of cruelly animals. So at the end of the day, those dogs are our responsibility, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, Gary. Gary works eight to five, he's not available. I have been the active ACO for, turn, turn me as that position, I responded to forty-three calls in the last couple of months, and handled forty-three calls. So if you think I'm not gonna follow up on those type of allegations, you're sadly mistaken. So I had the clerk simply call the kennel and ask where the dogs were. They refused to answer the questions. They wouldn't tell us they had the dogs. Now, if I'm correct, we pay them to board our dogs, but they won't answer our questions. So I took it upon myself to drive there with one intention, and one intention only, not to inspect the kennel, because that's an Utbridge. The question was, do you have our dogs? The lady at first gave me a hard time, she would not tell me where the dogs were. I had to remind her that if I have to conduct an investigation, I will. Then she said, okay, they're here. That's all I wanted to know, and I left, and I immediately called the Chair from the kennel. Later that night, I had a conversation with Mr. Fagan, it goes very well, we're on the same page, then I read this nonsense, which is exactly what this is. This is a personal attack on me, that's all this is, and a personal attack on my clerk, plain and simple. Whatever motive she has, I'm tired of it. You can simply read them. I'm not making this up. And Gary, if you didn't say any of this, where'd it come from? I mean, it's right here.
Let me, let me explain my, my position, okay?
No, I'm not asking you that first, I'm asking, did you make these statements? You're, you're in, you demanded to be here. Did you say that? Gary, it's simple, did you say you demanded to be here?
No, I don't, I don't believe...
That's my point. So something's taken...
I, I invited, I invited Gary, after our, hold on, Chief. After our conversation about Aldrich Street Kennel, I, I invited Gary to come to the meeting because I wanted to take care of this daytime animal control issue.
Now, the other part of the email that really troubles me is that I love the disclaimer at the end. "By the Executive Secretary, I have no idea about the laws regarding investigations, whether it's animal control or police, or whether it's the town it takes place in or not. Again, I have no involvement with this situation, I'm simply passing along a message." What message is she passing along?
That's correct.
Intimidating my integrity, from who?
No, those were all things, and Mr. Fagan was sat in my office, we had, we had two...
I don't have a meeting, I listened to what you said.
No, I, I don't deny sending out, Mr. Chairman, if I might speak.
Yeah.
I don't deny sending out either of those emails. I received, I believe, two telephone calls from Gary, and we had two meetings in my office, two Wednesday nights in a row, where my feeling was, you were very frustrated and upset, if those are not the right words...
I was upset with the Facebook page.
Maybe your, your, your interpretation of what he is, well, if he doesn't say it, you have no business saying it.
I was upset with the Facebook page.
He seemed very frustrated and upset to me with the entire situation.
One at a time.
My, 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 my entire defense here is what's in writing, not what he said, what she said. What this lady puts in writing is a personal attack and creates a hostile work environment. That's what she's done. Plain and simple. And then, we'll follow up on that. A nice lady contacted me regarding the ACO position, assistant. I was speaking to Joe at the time. So all I did, I said to the lady, I'll forward your information over to the Board of Selectmen, and Joe happened to be there. So I sent it to Joe. And, and I loved the response from the, from the Executive Secretary, Ministry of Secretary, wanting to know what business I have to talk about it. And I have that hidden out.
I think I asked, was there a reason why you had sent it to Joe?
Why did the chief ask a contact? What does that got to do with me and her? I can't speak to people in this town?
It doesn't, I was confused as to why Mr. opposed it.
Can I speak, please? Everything she does, she makes the mistake of putting it in writing, and think people are not gonna see it. Well, I read very well, and when I read this type of nonsense, that I can't forward something over to you, or Jennifer, or anyone else without her permission? That doesn't make sense, it's right here in writing again, questioning what I do, or what Joe does. She's questioning why a Board of Selectmen contacted the lady. Oh my God, what is this? Is this some new policies I'm not aware of? And the day I start answering to her about criminal investigations, I'm sorry, when that day comes, when my appointment date expires, don't reappoint me, 'cause that's not gonna happen. The day I have to explain to somebody that doesn't have my qualifications, I'm amiss when it comes to that. It, it's so misguided, it's, it's so disconcerting, you can't even describe it, but it's factual because I have it in writing. I'm intimidated to come into this station, from my station into this building. I think there's other people just as intimidated. That's the climate she's developing in this building. And to be frank with you, it's not very appealing. When you can't come to work, and you can't come here because there's allegations that I come here too often, or when I do, maybe I chit-chat too much. But if she's such a, a facilities manager, and she has that type of issue, she says, hey, chief, if you want something, call me. Instead, she calls the Chair and complains that I come here too often, or I'm disrupting? What other town employee has ever told you that? I'm just curious to know. It's always somebody else. Well, I think you have the obligation to investigate those type of complaints, 'cause they're, they're certainly foolish and out of touch. And I think there's other people, whether or not they have the courage to sit here like I do, is a different story, but to be frank with you, I've had it. And personal attacks, I will not tolerate. That's all, and I apologize to Gary, because Gary and I had this conversation, and none of this was even in the picture. And, and now, and I spoke to Gary outside, if I never said any of this, I'm here because you asked me to come here. Oh my God, well, that's how the emails say. The emails say, you demanded to be here, and you have a lot to say, so much that Mrs. Coffin can't add it in an email. That's what it says. I'm not making this stuff up. So I'm just looking for a little professional courtesy out of that office, so I can do my job, and I don't have to second guess whether or not someone's gonna stab me in the back. And that's what this has come to. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Chairman, if I might respond, please. First of all, I don't have those emails in front of me, so...
I'll give them to you, you can have it. Hey, go on, I highlighted your comments.
Thank you. I do recall receiving an email from the Chairman, asking Gary to come in. At the point, I didn't think we even needed to have him in, because you had said we wanted to talk about the assistant position. So I believe I replied to you saying, well, it's been posted, I'm not sure there's even a point in Gary coming in. And then, a little while later, I actually received a phone call from Gary, who was very frustrated and upset, and Gary, if those aren't the correct words, I apologize.
I was upset about the, the Facebook page, it was a lot of derogatory stuff on there.
What's that got to do with me?
No, no, I'm just, that's what I was, I was upset about this, this Facebook page, okay, this...
Very upset, it was, and I have it, it was a disturbing phone call...
I felt that, maybe that wasn't...
It makes me look incompetent, it makes me look like a fool, it makes me like I'm overstepping my boundaries.
Mr. Chairman, if I could have my turn to speak. So, I replied...
I do, I do.
Hold on, Gary, please.
I replied back to you, I just received a disturbing phone call from Gary, and he actually requested to be on Monday's agenda. I didn't say he demanded it.
You requested, you requested, Gary?
He did request, he said, yeah, I, I would like to be on the agenda.
All, all I know is I was told that they, they wanted to see me.
Right, and I said to him, well, it's funny, because Roland called this morning and asked me to have you in. He said, yeah, I, I actually do, I wanna come in. That's, I didn't say he demanded it, I said, he actually requested, he, he wanted to be here. That's all that meant. And then he told me the story, Gary alleges, I said alleges, this is the story Gary told me, that the chief went to the kennel this morning and got into an argument with the kennel owner. Did you not tell me that, Gary?
I did, it's 'cause she called me and told me that.
Okay, and I said, he's extremely upset and frustrated with comments that were posted on the Milville Facebook page. Did you not tell me that, Gary?
I did.
I just attempted to review them, but they were gone from the Facebook page.
But, just to remind people that those comments that were posted on the page were comments of a, of a resident.
Absolutely.
It was not of a town official.
Multiple residents.
Yes.
And what they complained about...
Well, I'm just clearing up that it wasn't a town official that made the comments.
Their complaints were legitimate, because the response I received from the kennel owner, and the response my clerk received, I'm amazed we're doing business there. But I understand Gary has a difficult time finding a kennel.
Yep.
I get that, I wouldn't wanna interfere with that. That lady was so rude. It was absolutely incredible, how rude, and you can speak to the residents in town who have the same opinion. So she simply violated the law by claiming she gave away the animals prior to seven days. So, gives me all the right in the world to go there, and I'm sure you're questioning what legal legality I used, and I just told you, chapter forty-one, look it up, or two seventy-two, look it up.
I didn't, I didn't question that.
It didn't, read very carefully.
It says, according to Gary, the comments posted were defamatory to both him as a town employee and the vendor, Aldrich Street, Street Kennel. Did you not tell me that, Gary?
Yes, I did.
Thank you.
They were, they were there.
You're going.
Then, my, this is my comment, this could open a huge can of worms, with him telling me, they were defamatory, as an employee telling me that, and a vendor... they were defamatory, as an employee telling me that, and a vendor, I said, this could open a huge can of worms, having comments like that on a town website.
And then you put the email, read the other email, question my statute.
Give me a moment, I'm going through one at a time. So, I said I was under the impression PD had privacy settings, and that caused me to actually go to our own town Facebook page, and you can't really set the privacy settings on comments, so that's a whole other issue. Um, and then I said Gary had much more to say, I'm not going to put it in an email, because he was going to come in and talk about it.
Do you, Gary?
Yeah.
There you go.
I'm, I'm, everything I'm talking about is.
Thank you.
Um.
I said, I think the board should review this matter and address it on Monday between the two departments involved.
Can you read the other email?
I don't see anything wrong with this email.
Can you read the other email a little more?
I'm happy to, I'm happy to.
We've had. No, Gary, let it finish.
Hold on, Gary, let her, let her.
Read that in.
Okay, so that was from two thirty in the afternoon, this one's from later at night, Wednesday night. Gary was in my office till, I don't know, eight, eight-thirty. Um, just an FYI, I had a visit from Gary this evening. He again expressed his frustration and concern about events that took place today. Were you not, I said serious concern and frustration. That's how I took your demeanor.
Do you have the right to say that to the water selectmen, what you believe is correct, to make me look bad?
I'm not, oh, chief, I was not trying to make you look bad.
You do a pretty good job reading the email.
I had no idea, I was the first to admit.
Keep reading the law part.
Okay, he explained that Chief Landry allegedly approached the kennel that we use in Uxbridge, indicating he was there conducting an investigation of animal abuse, based on comments made on the Facebook page. Did you not tell me that?
Yes.
Keep going, keep going.
Gary advised that the kennel owner was not pleased about the comments made on the website, and did not appreciate a visit from a Millville police officer.
She probably did say it.
Whoa, 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 let me interrupt for one second.
I can help, I did.
She had no knowledge of Facebook, because she told me that. She had absolutely no knowledge about Facebook, and I immediately took it off Facebook. She never read it, she never seen it, she told me that.
Yeah, I, I don't, right.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much.
But Gary did mention to me, that, you did mention to me that night that she was upset about the comments on Facebook. Whether you told her, or somebody told her about them.
I think somebody told her.
Okay, but you did mention to me that she wasn't happy about the website, and the visit from the police officer. And then I said, I have no idea about the laws regarding investigations.
I can't control if something is upset or not upset.
Well, should you have knowledge of what I know?
And I don't, no, it's not my jurisdiction.
You make sure you tell the water selectmen, you should have knowledge of it, more or less.
I never, I never said that I should, chief.
You're very, very sly when you write things, but if you really look at what you're saying, it's, maybe we should look at what he did, it's very.
That's not what this is saying at all.
Okay, okay.
This is saying, I know nothing about this, it's.
You're speaking about another department, but the laws of what we do, which you have no knowledge of.
And I said that right here, I have no knowledge. I didn't get, I was simply passing along.
How many hours did you spend in your office doing all this, Helen? And writing these emails and this and that, when you have better things to do than worry about what the chief does? He knows the law, he's a college educated person, and you're interfering.
I was simply relaying to this board of selectmen, information that was brought to me from another department head. If you do not want me to do that, that is fine. I thought it's part of my job, if a department head comes to me.
Gary, I do, I do.
I was just mad about the Facebook page.
Gary, Gary, I understand. Gary, hold on, she's talking.
If a department head comes to me, expressing whether it's concerns, frustrations, I, whatever the demeanor is, whatever, to me, it's my responsibility to let you all know as a board, that this is what happened this evening. One of your department heads, he is under your supervision.
Right.
He came to me, I was simply relaying, I did not get involved. In fact, I said, I think the board should deal with this Monday between the two department heads. I wanted nothing to do with it. I said, I have no involvement with this situation whatsoever, I am simply passing along a message.
Gary's a big one, he can contact everyone. Gary works to look for the board of selectmen, he can certainly call Roland.
Right, so, so that's, hold on, chief, so the question is, what is the protocol? If Gary has a complaint, what is the correct protocol for him to bring it forward to us? Does that get channeled through, Helen?
It can, I don't think.
Does he just call all five of us, or is he just calling you and the rest of us, sorry?
I don't even believe there's a written protocol. I think the pol, you know, the, the rule of thumb really is, Gary, or any appoint, you know, selectman appointed person would go to any selectman or Helen to get on an agenda, or just to file a complaint, or.
But, Chair, once again, my problem is when you read those emails, they're full of, comments that Gary never made, it labels me as something I did that's, read, you're a very intelligent group of others.
I think.
Read the emails yourself, inform your own opinion. It's very simple to read those emails. It's not something that he said, I said, it's right in front of you. She's interfering with my department and what I did.
And, and I, I know that keyboards can be really powerful.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, people's, people, you know, three, four people can, can perce, perceive an email all different, four different ways. And, um, I think sometimes, maybe emails could be, you know, a paragraph could be changed to a sentence, and then followed up with a phone call, or a phone call followed up with an email, vice versa, you know. And that would eliminate a lot of this.
At the end of the day, all I did was protect two innocent dogs.
No, absolutely.
And now I become a victim of foolish and frivolous emails.
I don't, I don't, um.
Which is an insult to my integrity, that's the bottom line.
The other thing, Roland, he's got statements there, and he's got, he knows the law, better than Helen does.
I know that, John.
And he's being questioned, and he's being questioned about it.
I did not question anything, I relayed a message from one department head that I received to the selectmen. I personally did not question the book.
Would you question the law regarding the dog? Thank you so much.
I just, I just, just my impression he had this evening, is, I can see how this transpired. Do you know what I mean? I, I think Gary had, Gary, I think the world of you, I want you to know that.
There are things that went on, uh, that, that people don't even know about. We had phone calls, uh, from alleged re, uh, animal rescue leads as far north as Maine, as far south as Pennsylvania.
Why, Gary?
I, I think, that what I think is, you know the gentleman that jumped in the lake to help get the dog? I think he called all these rescue leads. I got them, the kennel got them, we all got them.
They responded to Facebook.
Right.
We put their photos on Facebook, we put the story on Facebook.
I read the whole thing.
They responded.
I saw all of the comments.
And then, and then, and then we had, uh, somebody from Northbridge, who claimed they actually owned the dogs, okay? Um, they were, they were actually, it wa, it was a kennel that was in cahoots with, 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 with a resident that wanted, wanted them. He wanted one, and the kennel owner from Northbridge was a fan of the breed, she wanted the other one, okay? Um, so between the, the two of them, I got a phone call, uh, from dispatch saying, uh, I've got the, the actual owner of these dogs. And I called this person, and, um, I asked her, I was, I was in, in doubts of the whole thing. I asked her to go to the Millville police station and file a missing dog report, to try to make this thing legitimate, you know? She wo, she wouldn't do it. Uh, as a matter of fact, she even gave her name incorrectly to the dispatcher, by, by adding, to throw us off, by adding an E to her last name. And my wife happened to, she, you know, is big on Face, Facebook. She kept Googling her name, you know, trying different things, she dropped the E, Northbridge, bang, came up. She's got a huge kennel, and not only that, if you go on Facebook, sure enough, her name showed up. There was just a lot of, you know, a lot of things going on over this whole situation, you know, that we.
Right.
You know, that, between all the remarks, I got, I got, you know, a lot of, a lot of remarks, um, you know, there, there was, uh, uh, an incident between, you know, the chief and the kennel owner. It was just, there was just a lot of things going on. And, and quite frankly, I was just kind of upset about the whole thing. Because normally, this is a very, very smooth transaction.
Right.
Now, there were, there are many dogs in this town that we pick up, at, at the end of seven days, nobody claims them. A lot of these kennels, you, you've got to go up there, pay your bill, and get this dog out of there. With this particular kennel, she, she takes care of it, all the, all the, all the vag shoes, finds the homes, I don't even have to get involved in that. I've been, I, you know, I'm not saying Nancy Massey is maybe a little rough around the edges. I've been dealing with this woman for a long time, you know, and, you know, I've, you know, after fourteen years, you know, I, I pretty much trust, I'm not saying she always, I, I trust what, what, what she does.
We all get something, Gary.
And, and she, she probably, you know, she's got so many phone calls, uh, about these dogs, she probably got to the point where she's just started.
I think we just, I think we have a few issues going on here. I think Gary's intentions were, were well, I think the chief's intentions were well. I, you know, I don't doubt that, and I, and I think.
I, I, I appreciate.
And I hear your concerns about the emails coming through and that, and I think that's separate of Gary.
It is, it is.
And I don't want Gary to feel like he's in the middle of this, because that's not the case. I think that's a whole separate issue.
I believe, I believe, we work very well together. My police officers do very well on you, we have a great relationship. So, my problem is not with Gary.
Right, that's what I'm saying, there's a couple things here.
It's something interfering, and I have no business interfering between Gary and I. And that's what those emails are predicated on, it doesn't even make sense.
So, Gary.
I, I expressed some frustration to Helen because of everything that has transpired.
But, but did you, did you say that you're frustrated with the police department doing what they did? Frustrated with the Facebook, what, what? That's, that's the answer we're trying to get.
Yeah, I guess, I, I, I mean, everybody does things a little differently.
I was upset with the Facebook thing too, because I, I don't like Facebook.
As far as the face, I don't either, as far as the Facebook thing, you know, I, 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 I know Nancy, and I just looked at everything that was on there, and I just said to myself, it's a bungee bowl, okay? So, not one, not one ounce of credibility.
But, but unfortunately, Facebook is a good tool, and we have transparency.
It can, it can be very powerful, yeah.
We have transparency as a police department on Facebook, and we have a policy, we take everything, everything off that's negative.
Yeah.
So we use it as a tool to promote and to receive feedback, and it works very well. This particular circumstance, some people had some negative things to say, which is their problem, this is America, and we took them off. A can of worms, we didn't open up a can of worms. People have the right to state what they want to state, and we have the ability to take it off. That's what we did. So there's no can of worms in got, regarding my Facebook or my police department.
Right.
And that's another allegation, opened up a can of worms.
Here's my, here's my.
I'd love to see that written somewhere.
Yeah.
My, my arrangement with, with Nancy, okay?
Mm-hmm.
She primarily handles all the dogs that nobody, uh, wants.
Right.
Okay, and I, I can't tell you how much I appreciate that, okay? Other towns use her as well for the same reason, Uxbridge, Mendon. You know, she doesn't make a lot of money off this, off this town, or any of the other towns, because the do, the dogs are far and few between, you know. She does more, more of a service than, than, than anything, I mean.
Right.
So, in turn, in turn, I, I give her, if, if, if it is somewhat of a stray, I give her a little say as to what the end result of the dog's going to be. It's always a positive result. Sometimes the residents get the dogs, sometimes they don't, you know? These dogs needed to be, they had medical issues, one of them had an injured paw. They needed to be spayed and neutered, and so on and so forth. And also, we, we, we kind of thought that these dogs may have belonged to the same owner. Because how ironic is that the same, same breed is running around at the same time? And these, these dogs were like purebreds, you know, I mean.
Did I interfere in their placement whatsoever?
No.
Did I make any comment other than checking the safety of those animals?
No.
Thank you so much. I do apologize to the board of selectmen and the town residents for being so candid.
I, I was just upset.
But, that's my style, and I'm not going to change from that. When I'm personally attacked, and it's, the proof is in front of you, then I have the right to say what I, what I say. And I'm not going to change that. So, I do apologize, Gary, I do apologize.
I apologize to you as well.
You don't have to, because everything for my, I can, we have a great relationship.
I was, you know, you know, everything that transpired over the last, you know, three or four days, I just, I was kind of, by the time everything was said and done, I was kind of upset about the whole thing. And I expressed some, some, uh, displeasure to Helen, um, about, you know, everything that went on. You know, these things kind of upset me a little bit, you know, I mean, uh, when, when these things go on, you know, and, uh, you know, we were, we were trying to look out for the, for the best interest of the dogs, and, you know, you know, uh, the gentleman that, that wanted to adopt, I mean, at first he was like, well, I got a cat, there was some issues there, I wasn't a hundred percent sure if it was going to fit in with his family. And, I, I, you know, once somebody takes the dog, once they're done, we don't want them back, you know, we want to make sure it's in a good, solid, going in a real good, solid direction.
Gary, the lady accused me of not caring for animals, me, of all people.
Man, that, I know.
I go out of my way to care for every animal that I ever located.
Sometimes she's a little rough around the edges.
Well, she has to realize, when we ask for that information, she has to give it to us.
You, you know, again, she's not.
She knows why.
She's not up, up, up on all, you know, all the ones, too.
Unfortunately, she isn't, and I am.
She's up on that one, huh?
You know, sometimes, there can be a little bit of, you know, I just, you know, maybe a little bit of ignorance there, you know? You know.
As long as you can work that with her and let her know, especially if you're working with the police department, that, you know, maybe the two of you work together and figure out how to get that information.
After the, uh, after the, the time has expired, it used to be ten days, now it's seven. Once the time's expired, nobody's come, come, really come, come looking for the dogs. As far as I'm concerned, the welfare is now under the, of the dogs is now under the kennel.
I would have taken the rusty one if there was a home, I was going to check and see if that dog was healthy. But, they found a home for it, so that's okay. But, you know, I'm always looking out for the welfare.
Did you, did you, did you voice your, your interest?
Well, I only really wanted, unless it, unless it was going to be put down, I was going to take it.
But that would never happen.
Right, so I was going to take it, because that's, everyone knows me, I have a mini farm, I take every share, I take everything I can. So, I'm pro-animal, I've saved everything from a snake to a bird, that's what I do. So, these dogs, I had a particular interest that they were safe, and this is a result tonight. So, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, I can put a footnote to this, I too got wrapped up in this. And I took offense to the fact that the executive secretary was asking me, why the chief asked me to, get in the loop and contact the resident. Simply, I was doing my job. And, and the executive secretary, uh, made this statement, well, you should have referred me to, referred the resident to either Gary or yourself.
Because we have the applications, that, in my, I guess in my mind, from where I sit, that's just a logical process. But I didn't know if you knew the woman, if you knew she had, uh, qualifications in it, I didn't know if there was a reason why.
Simply said, I never met the woman, the chief asked me to do it. I did my job, I wrote, I wrote the note.
Sure, and I understand that.
To make, to submit her application, I wrote her a letter.
Sure, no, I, perfectly understandable, I didn't mean to offend you by that.
This comes upon a, a very difficult week for me, challenged by government issues within the town.
Absolutely.
And, uh, it gets to the point where it's demoralizing, it's demoralizing the chief. Uh, I find out that I'm the person, uh, non-Brada in town hall on, uh, at business hours. I'm a selectman in town, that's my job. I don't come here, you know, on frivolous, frivolous reasons. I, I have a mission to accomplish, to, to, to service, uh, or respond to residents in town. To assist in any way I can, that's, that's my job.
You're absolutely correct.
And why should I feel intimidated when I have to walk in the door as the chief does?
No, Mr. Chairman, I think I, I, you know what? I just realized what the mistake I made, the biggest mistake I've made recently, was that I did not request anything in writing from these department heads, about these various things, and what I did was I instead summarized them in my own words, and I sent them off to the board. to the board. And going forward, I will certainly, anybody comes to me, I will say, put it in writing, I do believe that's what the board.
That's gonna avoid another meeting like this, and I'm awful.
And as far as the chief's concerned, I know more than anybody how much he loves animals. These emails were never an attempt to demean him or demoralize him, or I forget the word he used, but it was simply relaying a message I received from one department head to the selectmen. And if I did paraphrase and use words like frustrated and upset, and Gary doesn't agree with that, I apologize, but the demeanor he had in my office was that of frustration and upset. They were not very long emails, they were very quick, one paragraph, just letting you know, this is what happened. I like to do that by email to all five board members so that you all know, just to give you a heads up, so that if something should happen, I don't like you all being blindsided. I, I have, I am the first to admit, I know nothing about the animal control laws, the police laws, the investigations. I said that in my email. I never questioned the chief's, what he does for his job, that is his business. I'm not asking him to report to me what he does, absolutely not. I, I want nothing to do with what he does, that's his department. So I do apologize to the chief if he was offended by that, I, I read these again, and I really, I don't see anything horrible with these emails, I was relaying a message.
You're relaying a message that wasn't spoken, so how can you not see there's an inconsistency here? That's absolutely incredible.
I disagree, I, I have to respectfully disagree.
You mentioned Gary requested this meeting.
He did ask to be here.
He just said he didn't. Gary, did you request to be here?
Not, no.
Thank you, thank you. We can end that issue.
I, I don't think we should be going back and forth, but that's my, this is offensive, the chief putting Gary in.
I was just told, I was, I was, I was told that I was requested to be here.
To be here, and I had emailed.
While I'm going to be here, I got a, a few issues about some of the things that have gone on.
Yeah, he had replied to me, yeah, yeah, you know what, I do, I actually do want to be there, I do want to come in.
All right, good.
To me, that was the request, he wanted to come in.
All right.
I never said he demanded, I used the word, he actually requested to be on the agenda.
I'm, I think I'm going to look for a motion right now, but going forward, as Helen stated.
Everything will be in writing.
All issues or complaints to Helen will be put in writing, and then she can forward it to the five of us.
Now, wait a minute, let me ask you something.
And now we're there, whatever, wait a minute, John, I'm talking.
Yeah, right.
I'm talking.
Yeah.
Okay. The message will be put in writing, Helen can scan it, or whatever, whatever technology we have back there, and scan the, the actual letter, so words cannot be changed to all five of us, and then we're not going to sit through this again.
So what are you saying? That means if I want something from you, I have to put it in writing?
For what?
If I need something from you, I have to put it in writing?
From who?
Helen.
No.
No, no, you might have.
We're saying the people that we appoint.
I know what you're saying, I'm making a point to you to make sure it's correct, that we do not have to answer.
It's only, it's only the boards that the board of selectmen appoint.
Thank you, but I want to make sure I understand that right, because I don't want to hear, oh, you got to put it in writing. She works for us, I don't work for her. That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure you have an understanding.
See, this is exactly why we're here tonight, because people are misunderstanding what people are saying.
And I don't even think it needs to be, I think it's just, even if it's just a request to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
For this topic, if the person doesn't want to put their things in writing at that point in time, they have the, they have the right to bring their topic or concern here, especially our appointed members.
So, an interpretation of why the person wants to be here could get sideways. I, I, well, as, as long as their sentence, paragraph, whatever it is, is scanned.
Right, I think something has to be, right.
Right.
I'm with you.
All right, and now it's not reduplicated in any other way, it's scanned as written by them, whether it's written, or if it's. If it's handwritten, we'll have to scan it, if it's an email, just forward that exact email, and then nobody's going to be questioned other than the resident or other.
I don't want people to feel that they have to draft a whole letter, because that might be something, as I've said before, emails are read with the intention of the reader and not the intention of the who sends it.
Just, uh, you know.
Just as a letter being submitted. If they just want to request an agenda item with the topic, I'm good with that, and if they want to present whatever they have here to us, then that should be appropriate.
Yeah, if they want to hand it out early, good, if they want to hand it out at the meeting, that's good.
That's their part.
But as long as we have their request and subject.
And if you're setting the agenda.
And there'll be a guest on, on, right here?
If you, as the chair, setting the agenda, had further questions, then you could contact Gary and say, you know, what exactly, and, you know, if you needed more information.
Right.
That's it.
And then, I think that would avoid a lot of.
And I'm way okay with that, too.
And we also had an incident recently where, where I actually was not comfortable relaying the information, and I actually asked that department head to speak to you directly in front of me, if you recall that, and that person did.
Yes.
So that, that was also something that I, that I did, because I, I was not comfortable putting that in writing, quite frankly, so I, I said, you know what, you should talk to the chairman directly, and that person did, so. Instances like that, we will have it put in writing to all five members.
Yeah.
That way you're, you're pulled out of being in the middle as well, Mr. Chairman.
And if, if they say, well, I don't want to give it to you, then have them send it directly to me, or, any, they can send it to any selectman. And then I, I think we made a policy a little while back, that an email would be sent to me, can, from, from another selectman, can we, you know, I'd like to add this to the agenda, and I forward that to you, and then that's it, done, we're not going to do this, this is crazy. We just spent forty-five minutes on.
Is there a motion to that effect?
Some of them, it may be submitted by department head and appointed officials to be placed on warrant.
Or they won't put it in writing?
Or, yes.
So it'll be seconded?
In writing, to be that.
On, on an agenda, referring to.
Yeah, if they have a complaint, if they have a concern, they can just, and they, that person individually can expand or just simplify how they, how they wish.
Did you draft the form?
Enough to, well, no, they can just, and if somebody wants to handwrite it, that's fine.
For animal control issues.
I mean, yeah.
Simplify that, or you can go into detail.
Email, handwritten, on email, whatever.
Yep.
Or if somebody still has a typewriter.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. It was, I made the motion, and you second it, Mr. Baker?
I'm fine, you know what?
Sorry, I know.
It's how I am.
I know.
And, and.
I did second it.
I'm not bashful, truly not bashful, and I believe I've been.
All in favor?
Of anything.
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Are you, are you still got another one?
I'm sorry?
Do you have another?
No, I, I apologize that this whole thing even transpired, you know, just.
It is what it is, you know, at this point.
No, I, I like things to be quiet and smooth, I know, that's the way I.
Yeah, but we're going to look forward now.
I know, I like to work in the background quietly, you know, and.
I will say, Gary, I did see that dove man run across the street into Chelsea Street on my way home, and I said to myself, wow, I can remember as a kid seeing dogs just running all over this town, and now I never see a dog, and it caught my attention because I never see dogs run.
I think, I, I think somebody, you know.
Dumped them.
Just opened up their car door and said, get out, you know, because.
They were running them, at least the one I saw.
The two, the, the two, the, the two breeds, identical breeds, almost the same age, I mean, we just felt that they came from the same owner, and we did our best to try to keep them together, you know? Um, you know.
Now, hopefully in two weeks, maybe we'll have an appointment for the board.
Yeah.
Maybe one of those two will, um.
You know, I, I've worked with Nancy for, for a long time, long, I mean, you know, I, I, after thirteen, fourteen years, I, I pretty well know, know the woman.
Gary, if you have a good working relationship with her, and that's working for your department, and there hasn't been any issues.
You know, I don't know.
Then we'd be overly concerned, we can work, you can work out the rest of those other details.
I, I don't know what's, what, what the future holds, because, you know, let's face it, nobody lives forever, you know, and, so I don't know what future arrangements are going to be.
Right.
You know, I just take everything, you know, day by day.
When you left my office, you had said, I'm not even sure we still have the kennel.
Exactly, exactly.
Is she still working with us, or?
I, I had a long conversation with her, and I, I was, you know, able to, she thought that, that the town was, was going to go elsewhere, but she wants to be part of this community, too. She, she does, she, she wants to stay on as the town kennel.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, there's been times when, you know, she didn't want, you know, to, to deal with the town, you know, and, you know, there were times when we had to go and talk to her, but she, she, you know, she, she takes care of all the health issues, I mean, she's got like, like, you know, medicines, I mean, she, she, she nurses them, gets them back up.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Pretty, pretty good, so. I'm not saying she's perfect, she's not.
All right.
But, you know, she takes good care of the animals, and that's what, what matters, you know?
All right.
Thank you, Gary.
All right, thank you, thank you.
I apologize for, you know, just.
All right, that's okay.
You know, there were, there were, you know, there were things, you know, said on Facebook, and then people fighting, and it's just, I don't know.
No, don't worry about it, it's past now, we're going to look forward.
Anyway, it's a disaster, you know?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, first public forum?
You might want to get up during this.
Yeah.
So you can get out, because I don't see you on the agenda.
Yeah, no, you're not on, so this would be when you would.
This is about the 171 St. Joe Street. We were told that there was a cease and desist order passed down.
That was the conservation, the fifty feet.
Yeah, the, the.
On the wetlands.
Because they're in the buffer zone.
So he's not allowed to do any work by the wetlands at all, because he was there today, burying more stuff, taking the big rocks and smashing them up, I actually have a couple pictures.
I actually was at work today, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Tim, and I received messages from Mrs. Crenshaw, who lives further down, and she, she was quite frustrated, because she's like, he's here, but I called, and they can't do anything because it's conservation, and there's no one to enforce it. So essentially, there's a cease and desist, and nobody can do anything about it, because there's no one here to enforce it, so she was, she was very frustrated with the situation. I told her I was going to bring it up later about when we're going to have our, a meeting or such, so, I'm, go ahead, you're not the only one who saw it.
Yeah, I know, I, we, I have heard about that today, but, I mean, the cease and desist order, I mean, is he just supposed to be staying away from the wetlands, or is he still allowed to do stuff on the property?
I think the whole project is, while being investigated, has to be stopped on a cease and desist.
He, he was there today, and he was.
And I did, I don't have the actual law, but talking to people in the business, because last time we met, we spoke about cement block and brick, okay, and asphalt. Cement block has to be crushed, not crushed, not with a machine, to inch and a half minus, in other words, nothing could be larger than an inch and a half, and then through that crushing process, all steel has to be removed from.
Which unfortunately.
But I don't have the exact laws, and he didn't give, give them to me, but he was explaining, and then asphalt can also be buried, but again, has to be processed into gravel and, and sold as such, and.
Isn't that sold like in seconds or something like that?
Yeah, it's got to be crushed even smaller, I believe in.
Because what he was doing, actually, he has a big metal, whatever you want, and he's taking it into his payload, lifting it up and smashing it, and, and just doing it that.
He can split rock, rock.
So, that's, unfortunately, this is, I have a picture of the concrete that he was splitting, and also the pile of stuff that he was.
I'm going to ask you a question, are you showing us these pictures again?
They did, they did.
I asked you the last time.
The dates.
The dates and the, um.
Tag it Geo.
Right. Is that on now?
Uh, to tag it Geo, no, because it wouldn't allow me to tag it on, on Geo when I go to print it.
But it shows on the, on, on.
It, it shows on the, on the computer, on the, on the camera and all that, it, it will show the, the date.
And the time.
And the time and all that, right?
You want, you want the days?
These, these are today's, these are actually a three forty-two in.
If you email them, they'll show the Geo tag.
I just want to make sure, because that, basically, that, you know, if it doesn't have a date of time, it's going to kind of kill us.
Oh, yeah, on, on, on the computer, I have all that stuff, but when you go to print it, it doesn't always print out the Geo stuff and all.
Yeah, so save it that way, so in an email, it'll, it'll be Geo tagged.
But, I mean, as you can see, this is the stuff he was pulling out, heavy, heavy.
Can the state do anything about that?
Yeah, they can, I mean, this is the proof that they would have to see.
Can, have we set a date for the earth removal board?
I'm still waiting to hear back from the earth removal agent, who's also the building inspector. He met with the gentleman, the gentleman was in, the gentleman that was here at the last board meeting was in Wednesday night, last Wednesday night meeting with Jim, so I'm waiting for a report from Jim on what transpired in that meeting, and if he's ready to.
Because we need to know who we send up there and for what, and fraction, because I think there is some disparities in, in what we can and what we can't do. And it's, I'm sure it's frustrating as residents to be sitting there and seeing this, and then you're hearing about a cease and desist, but where is the cease and desist, and who's going to go up and enforce it? If our building inspector isn't handling the day to do so, then should we, we need to authorize someone else in his absence to go up there.
That was a conservation commission cease and desist, and I know the email that Amy had sent me, she had said, please forward this to Chief Landry, so we did that, I don't know if that means the police department does have authority to enforce it.
That's what we want to find out.
Or if it was just an FYI for him to keep his eyes open, I'm not sure, we'd have to look into that.
If it's not the police department, it'd be the state police, that would be an enforcer.
We need to know that information.
Yeah.
Okay. So who would do we send when we get a complaint, and for what can we send them for?
Right.
And as a, as a earth removal board, can't we meet and just to put a whole cease and desist on the whole project until we touch base again?
Well, that's what I thought the whole thing was.
I, because he's not removing earth anymore, he's bringing in or relocating, he's not taking off.
What's his permit? What's his application, though?
Well, there really was no application, because he was found that he was exempt from needing an application, because it was for.
An application would go through whom, though?
The earth removal board. The earth removal board.
So I say we do it because we have questions into what he's, if his first application still represents what's going on there.
But we, maybe I'm misspeaking. He doesn't have an application at all. He didn't need to fill out an application.
We have no paperwork.
Because he claimed there was a farm.
Exactly.
But even with that, there was no paperwork that had to be filed.
There was a letter, he sent us a letter explaining that there was.
Based on his.
A legal opinion from town council.
Who authorized that, the state? To give him.
No. This was town council.
Council.
It's in the earth removal bylaw. It's in the earth removal bylaw.
So I think we just, I, why can't, if we meet and say that we have questions about what's going on, put a cease and desist on the whole pro, well, that would be the.
Yeah.
That would be a motion I would probably make at that meeting. Put a cease and desist on the whole project and have it come back in to see if it still falls underneath those guidelines.
I, yeah, I can do that. I, I have a feeling the answer is.
We just need a meeting. How many are on that board? Us?
Three.
Building?
Amy and planning.
Building.
I mean.
Planning and planning.
I'm a builder.
Does.
I have a feeling the answer is going to be that.
What's confusing is he claimed that he didn't know about the bylaws, but he knew enough of the bylaws to create a farm.
But the premise of the earth removal bylaw is if they're removing earth.
I think he's playing the town is what he's doing.
It smells.
Why wouldn't they go through planning board? Cause what they're doing is like construction. I mean, can you just do that?
It sounds to me like we're kicking this nut, this can down the road some more.
Yeah.
I have i- i- in front of me, uh, minutes from a meeting of May fifteenth, twenty thirteen, where seven residents showed up here on this issue. Two years later, shy of one week, this is still ongoing. Shame on this board for not moving it ahead.
Well, the, the, um, zoning commissioner, building inspector and earth removal agent, who was all one person, were always informed if there were complaints coming in from residents and they would go do site visits and come back and say, "There's nothing I can do," so, I mean, in this board's defense, the board did act, um, you know, through me asking a person in that position to investigate, so.
But back in two thousand thirteen, we had the, you know, the same complaints. I mean, he's, he's working in wetlands. I mean, he's got pipes now draining into wetlands, you know, which we all know is totally illegal. You're not supposed to drain anything into a wetland. You know, and now just moving stuff from point A to point B, trying to make it smaller. And literally, every time he does it, he's putting dirt over it and just going deeper and deeper.
So we need to find out from the conservation, who's, who's responsible for that cease and desist, if there is.
It was the DEP that supposedly issued it.
Oh yeah, Joe Belino. So maybe a, a call needs to go to him, or you take down his name and you call him yourself.
I think, I think we, we'll contact each other.
Cause we need that information for our residents so that, you know, we can figure out who to send or how to help them.
I know Sheri was also working, Sheri in the Board of Health was also working on the DEP end of it. And the last time I had checked with her, the gentleman had not gone out there the day he was supposed to. I think it was supposed to be a Friday. And he didn't make it, so he had rescheduled it. Do you know if he had ever come out or did you ever meet with him or?
Who was?
The DEP agent?
Yeah, the, um, Joe Belino and, uh, Mike Penny came out.
So they did.
But then it was canceled on, and he was supposed to meet them there.
Okay.
Um, and they had no authorization from the owner, cause they couldn't get in touch with the owner. So they basically couldn't go on the property. Um, they did look from our angle on Broadland Street, but that was, you know, they couldn't see a lot of the stuff that they needed to see. Um, I think they went from the cemetery and two and looked in that way. Um, and they did have recommendations for the Conservation Commission to tell him he needed to get all of the stuff away from the land buffer to fix the, uh, salt barrier, which is a hundred percent across, and it's lying down in the areas. Um, I did note by them that he is draining into the wetlands. I haven't heard anything regarding that, and.
You know, if I DEP or conservation.
I told the Conservation Commission, I sent, uh, pictures to.
Amy.
Is it Peter Murray?
Peter, okay.
Um, and I, he worked by Joe Belino, and, um, Mike Penny sent me an email, um, not sure on the date, about looking. Uh, and he said that, um, he spoke to the building inspector, who had met with, um, Mr. Iresi, who told him he would be removing all of the waste film within the next two to three weeks.
Oh, okay.
Um, not sure who's following up on that.
Him, he's bring, still bringing it in.
It, it's, well, he's not bringing it, he's just moving it from point A to point B now and, and, and making it smaller and burying it. So it's where we can't see it. It's a mess.
So he's not removing it from the property?
Nothing has been removed.
He's just moving around and.
Yeah, he's moving it, he's, like I said, he's, there's a big, probably about a three ton steel ball he's dropping and making it smaller. And of course, that goes right into, into the ground, and you can actually see new dirt just being put right over that. And then he runs this tractor over, looked like it was never there. So.
Wonderful.
That's why when we had the cease and desist, we figured, okay, who do we call to stop this guy from doing anything else until?
Have you contacted the building inspector at all?
Just that one time.
Okay.
Uh, that, he came out and he took a look at the property and all that.
Okay, you might wanna touch base with him again. Um, you could email him at building@milvilleMA or you could, uh, call the office number, um, and just let him know, 'cause then he can maybe get a site inspection done during the day.
I'll, I'll just keep saying that. I think we need to know what we can enforce and who's gonna enforce it. I mean, if we're gonna wait for a building inspector to come who does two hours a week in town versus a conservation committee who's, works all day and comes home at night, I, I think we need something during the day. We need to find.
If there's a complaint, we can call this police department or the state police or somebody.
That's what I'm saying, we need to know who.
And if they walk on the property with the cease and desist in their hand.
Yeah, 'cause back in two thir, uh, two thousand thirteen, when there was a cease and desist, you know, uh, Lauren Sacco ended up calling the police and they acted like they didn't know what was going on. So, I mean, it just makes her look like a fool, which, you know, we don't want anybody to look like a fool.
Well, Chief is well informed of, of that right now, so.
And also as a follow-up, I'm not sure if it was you or Lauren had mentioned about National Grid. Uh, actually, maybe it was a gentleman himself, that National Grid gave up their easement. We called and verified that's not the case.
He, he, he changed his tune when he was sitting there on camera. He said that wasn't the case.
Empty holes.
And they were going to be, um, they were gonna be sending a rep out as well, um, so I don't know if that'll do any good, but.
There's an easement between the wetlands and the, uh, houses and of course the towers. He's only gonna have about two feet of property. He could do anything on that. So, I mean, we just wanna stop it from, before our wells go.
Yeah.
That's our biggest thing.
And your last name, sir?
O'Brien.
O'Brien. And what, uh, your, what number?
Forty-seven B.
Forty-seven, thank you.
My, my question would be, what if this, these people walk away from that property? What do you do to recover it? They, they haven't filed a bond with the, with the treasurer. So that just falls in the town's lap.
Yep, and we have to get rid of all that scrap.
Yeah, who can we hold responsible if our wells get poisoned too, because whatever he's burying, you know? I mean, this could be like a, you know, a, a nuclear dump site as far as we're concerned.
Right.
I know it's not, but I mean, just.
Yep, no, you're right.
Anything illegal, we don't need in our backyard.
And the earth removal board should probably look at that bylaw. For their agriculture, because one person gets wind of it, you know what happens.
Yep.
It starts to get taken advantage of across the board.
Earth, earth removal in the bylaw, earth removal is allowed for, for farm, but the, the removal has to be ins, uh, an incident related to the agricultural purpose or use of the property.
Not a word, like, I can take my compost out, but I can't take anything other than that out.
Mm-hmm.
Cause that's, that's, that's all I have is animals. I don't have vegetation of any sort, so weeds.
Yeah, we need, we need more information.
Yeah.
We need a point person.
Hmm?
You do have plenty of that.
I got lots of weeds.
I'll take your weeds so we cover the dirt. It won't be so dusty.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Sure. That's alright.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Um, I talked to, um, Joe Belino and Mike Penny and they said, "It's not old agricultural, so they shouldn't be exempt from any, you know, permit, getting permit, whatever." Um, but my question is, we have a farm in our family, uh, it's a hundred fifteen acres and they do, um, chapter sixty-one. Uh, I believe it's A or B, it's, it's chip, six, sixty-one, sixty-one A and sixty-one B. Um, and they were, they were, you know, talked about them, the situation, and they were wondering if he's filed under chapter sixty-one, whatever, to get, you know, a discount on his property taxes. And I was wondering if you guys knew that, 'cause I know he has to file in October and then, you know, he gets a discount 'cause he's agriculture, which he really isn't.
Right.
I was on the assessors', oh god, I don't.
I don't think it works like that.
And that, not to say it didn't come in after, but it wasn't one that I remember. But that's easily, you can easily find that out by contacting the assessors' office. That's done during open meeting. And you're right, they do apply by October and, um, it's for, there's all different reasons.
Right.
Um, I know that we have one on Justina Hill Road. We have a couple within town that are kinda standard, like every year they just applied.
Yeah.
That wasn't one that I remember from my time on that board, but that doesn't mean that he hasn't since applied for that, so.
Right.
That would be a question for the assessors.
Obviously, my, my thing was, and they were saying to me that, you know, it doesn't sound like he would fall under those stipulations of sixty-one, sixty-one A, sixty-one B. So that, I guess that would be something that the town, you know, would be interested in looking into.
I, I've looked into, uh, I looked into what he was paying for cats for just about nine acres. It's in the eight hundred dollar range.
So he's, he definitely is then, 'cause I'm paying almost twenty-two hundred dollars, so, and I have like point two-five. So, uh, I would have to say that he's.
If, depending on how much wetlands there are, then it's, it can be adjusted because of the wetlands and it's built, there's a whole.
Yep.
Thing.
But that's a big plot.
Usable. No, I, I, don't get me wrong, but I'm just.
Kinda sounds like he is, but I, I, like I said, you know, just maybe question it. Um, I don't know who to question. You said the assessors, so.
The assessors would be able to say if he's filed for that agricultural, recreation. There's a couple of different ones that people can get a discount on there.
My understanding was the cease and desist, he was supposed to, um, the cease and desist is, is cover the wetlands, but he is also not supposed to be doing any work on the property because he's supposed to file paperwork with the town. So he's clearly there, he's been there twice since that came into play, um, and, you know, who do you call? You call the police. I, I know Beth said she had called the police and they told her to call the Conservation Commission, so she had sent an email.
And no one's saying.
So.
We don't have, the conservation doesn't have a secretary.
Yeah, they know who.
They have a secretary, but not a full-time secretary.
But she said, she said, they did what they can do. They did the cease and desist. Now it needs to be enforced. And she thought the police would be able to enforce that.
That, from Amy?
Yeah.
Said that?
So I don't know, I guess we're just frustrated with, we don't know who to call.
Chief, can I, can I ask you a question? On, on one seventy-one Central, that cease and desist that was filed, we don't have any conservation or any of us here full-time during the day or the building inspector that is authorized to enforce the cease and desist. So if a resident calls and he is there working, even though there's a cease and desist, does the police department have the authority to enforce that or do we have to go to state police?
Um, all I can do is write a report to Helen and send it to Helen, because it's a civil cease and desist order. I want to read it, since you're an email, you could get it to me. That would be a contact of district court. They would have to go to district court with the complaint. I can't stop it, um, unless it's specifically in the cease and desist, and I haven't seen that. So if I can see it, I can really answer your question. But from what I know of them, they're civil. I don't enforce civil law. So, uh, I can document it though, like today, I can document what's been here, been done. And then with that report, conservation or whoever obtained the cease and desist, they can go to court. So we'll do that and we'll monitor every day and write a report as to what's going on and then give it to conservation. I think I sent the, Helen that email, who will do that.
Alright. No, 'cause we're just curious on.
Right.
Like their update today.
Yeah, unfortunately it's not criminal.
Right, alright.
Even if the town, if the earth removal or the selectmen say no more.
Right.
It's still a civil.
It's a civil order. It's issued on a civil court, not on a criminal court.
Okay.
So, yeah, the violation would go before the district court, and they can petition district court for that cease and desist order.
Okay.
They can bring them to court, but the ACO can bring some to court.
Yeah.
That's the same for building inspector too?
Same with building inspector. They'd be doing the same there. They do a district court square of complaint, and it would be adjudicated there, civil, not criminal.
Okay.
Great, thank you. My opinion is, and I don't know if you wanna hear it, but he's gotten away with, you know, whatever, and he just feels that nobody can do anything, so he's just gonna keep doing whatever he wants.
And I think Joe can attest that his attitude at his property is different from his attitude at the meeting.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, definitely.
Heckle and Jide, huh?
Mm-hmm.
We've, we've, we've confronted him and, you know, he's not a very pleasant man.
Yeah.
On site in much different areas. Thank you.
Alright.
We need some answers.
Oh, correspondence. Uh, May ninth to the eighteenth, uh, police chief will be away, um, on the family vacation. Bill Coop will be, uh, in charge as soon as I find that. I must have threw it on the bottom. Sorry, chief. Sergeant Bill Coop will be in charge, uh, of the day-to-day activities for the Millville Police Department, so. Well, enjoy your vacation, chief.
Thank you. Chief won't be around for the CMR PC meeting.
Or the town meeting either. He's gonna miss all.
Or the centennial meeting.
You'll feel bad, won't you?
You look, you look upset.
Don't look back. We'll all be here when you get back.
Um.
Same stuff.
This is very important here, the, uh, the happy birthday Millville, um, centennial celebration, which will kick off Sunday, May first, two thousand sixteen, at one PM with a, with a gigantic parade that's probably gonna spread five towns long. No, I don't know. I don't know.
I will, I will say, I am not part, I am on the centennial committee, but I am not part of the parade committee. The parade committee is, um, diligent and working hard and just, they, I kudos to them because they, they're really pulling it all together. It will be the kickoff event. It will actually fall on our birthday, the hundredth day. So it's really, um, they're, I know they, they meet constantly, um, they're always doing things, they always have an update. And, um, so what you have before you is the application for organizations for the parade, so.
So, very exciting and, uh, it's coming real fast.
Yes, one year.
And just think, I think it was four years ago, we said, "We better start doing something," and all of a sudden it's here.
Yep, that fast.
Uh, also, um, Charter Cable will, will be our provider, um, till end of their contract as of now. Comcast, uh, if not merge with, is not going to merge with Time Warner. So, um, the cable providers are not gonna be changing. Uh, what else? And then we got the. Northbridge, yeah. And then also, um, the, this is a, a letter from the town of Northbridge, the, uh, says, "Dear Chairman Barrett, on behalf of the town of Northbridge, it's, it's board of selectmen and public safety officials. I want to take this opportunity to thank the Millville Police Department for the invaluable assistance they provided during Corporal John Dawson's funeral services last week." It was actually two weeks ago, this letter was a week, is a week old. Uh, "It was most appreciated. All the support we received from surrounding communities and beyond allowed the town of Northbridge to support the Dawson family and provide our soldiers with, with a proper and touching farewell. Again, we thank you, that, we thank you, the town of Millville, for, for their support. Very truly yours, Theodore Kozak, Town Manager." So, uh, yeah, that was quite a sad thing.
Yeah.
So. Uh, what else we have? That's about it. Guys, got all these others, the disclosure for Chief Landry. Uh, Natalia's certificat, certified. And the Title V complaint of twenty Chesley Street.
Saw that.
And that, that was addressed to the selectman. I know it doesn't say it on the, uh.
So.
The letter itself, but the envelope is to the selectman.
Is that a neighbor complaining against, uh, an abiding property? But whoever sent that.
A complaint against what?
A resident complaining about an adjoining or abiding property.
I, I think so.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
It's, but thi, this is really a complaint from Board of Health.
It is, yep. I mean, this was in an envelope for the selectman, but it, it was.
Sheri has it too. And I think that was it for. And just remember that this Wednesday night at six PM is the hearing for the finance committee, financial articles at the, uh, for the budget on the, uh, special and annual town meetings. Uh, appointments and resignations, there's none. Old business, we have none tonight.
Executive secretaries, you call them?
I don't have one.
Well, sorry, I've done, I've done that to you before. Sometimes it's too long, so. Alright, uh, new business, nobody, anybody?
No old business, no new business.
Oh, old, um, we, um.
Old business? I'm sorry.
Are we all good on the meeting date?
Oh, yeah. Let's, on old business, while the three of us are here, well, uh, Helen, I offered Helen that Jennifer and myself would do her review. Uh, so if, if that's okay with the board, myself and Jennifer, to do Helen's review. And then maybe we could set a date.
Going forward, I would like, I've mentioned this before, I would like to see the review forms change.
Well, we're gonna, that's gonna be, we're gonna restructure all of them, the chiefs, uh, 'cause there's certain i, issues or items on there that we. because there's certain issues or items on there that we don't, no. We can't really grade, you know?
Well, what I was thinking was, um, what I was asking for the dates was-
We do have to present this year's-
Right. Was for the, the lawyers, if we were all still, the dates that you would send out.
Right, I think, uh, Mr. Barrett and yourself confirmed.
Yeah.
For tomorrow night, anyway.
Yeah, that was, I don't, I don't care.
Okay, I just-
Who else is gonna be here tomorrow?
Tomorrow night for the lawyer, for, uh-
Because the dates were-
What's at eight o'clock?
Tomorrow at eight, yep, and then the nineteenth at six and seven.
I can do it tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night at eight o'clock?
Yeah.
So the fifth?
Was, uh-
I don't have it.
And then, then the nineteenth is-
At eight, and then what was the other?
Uh, nineteenth.
Tomorrow's just one of them.
The nineteenth at?
Six and seven.
Six and seven, because I did not put them in my, um, planner, because I hadn't heard, so lawyers.
Here, so.
I can do my homework tomorrow during the day sometime, I'll be here.
Alright.
My research.
And then, uh-
Lawyer. Eight o'clock.
Alright, and then, I don't know, what, what's a good time for your-
Oh, never, yeah, never.
The time, are you generally, what time is Keith home?
Very busy lady, um-
To watch the girls.
It all depends, I mean, there's some, it-
One night would be better, or worse, so, me, every night's the same.
Wednesday's not good, um. We could do it before, the lawyers, we can do it, um, Thursday, I'm here for a fundraising meeting at four. I'm available to five thirty on Friday this week. Do you want me to just send over some date, the times, and figure it out?
Doesn't matter to me.
When do you get back into town?
Me, I'm usually home by five thirty, so. I mean-
Did you want to just do it tomorrow night before the attorneys, if you can both get here a little sooner, or?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, yeah. I can do that, okay.
Think, half an hour, three hours?
Whatever, it's fine. Whatever you deem necessary.
It's at eight, so maybe seven thirty?
Sure.
Not gonna take that long, I mean, there's only-
I don't think about that.
Eight categories, so, yeah. That settles that. Okay, so members for town governance, and that was requested by, for by Joe.
Mister, Mister Chairman, um, these folks might want to go home. So let's do the green energy-
Oh, I don't care.
Administration first.
Yeah. I thought they wanted to be here. This is exciting.
I don't have cable anymore.
Oh.
It's, uh, it's, it's been very trying to, to get to this, the process in getting a, a grant administrator in place. We, the green energy committee has jumped over all the hurdles and the like. And, uh, tonight, there's two things I'm asking of the, uh, select, uh, the chair. Is that, uh, we've got a, um, an exemption from, um, ethics. The, the pro, the issue of the problem was that you needed to comply to two sixty-eight. And, uh, that says, an employee of the town can't hold two jobs in any given town.
Correct.
But since we're a small town, there's an exemption in that agreement. And the, uh, Ethics Committee said, all you have to do is to have your board, your select board, request and approve the exemption from section twenty B. And if we so vote to approve that exemption, uh, we should take a vote, and the chair is requested to sign. The, uh-
So the vote would be to approve the exemption and give the chair the authority to sign it.
Right.
Well, let's read it.
Okay, the, um, you want me to read the?
If, if there's a summary of the, of the law, and then read the exemption. Um, you don't have to read the whole entire law, just the part that, that pertains to the law.
Okay.
What we have, if you'd like.
I even brought that with me, I have it somewhere, bear with me a moment.
Because we want the people that worked to get, to get what they deserve. We just want to make sure that we're, and I think that's what Marilyn is nervous about.
Yeah, and yet, the other thing was, uh, why didn't I, I ha, I have the law here somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. The, uh, do you have the law with you, Trish?
No. But it's summarized in the letter.
Let me, let me read the letter, see if this is- The ethics summarized it? So read that letter from the ethics, probably.
Dear Chairman Barrett, I have expressed the interest in the position of grant administrator for the Green Community Grant awarded by D O E R to the town of Millville. I am currently point of contact for the D O E R, and will need no training to, uh, be brought up to speed with the goals and strategies of the Green Community Grant. The grant voted to support me as the grant administrator. The committee has contacted town council and the State Ethics Commission under the Small Towns Exemption, section twenty B, allows municipal employees in a town with fewer than thirty-five hundred people to have a financial interest in a contract with a different municipal agency, provided that the individual files, let me start again, provides that the individual files a statement with the clerk or the city or the town, a statement making a full disclosure. This exemption was submitted for your signature, Mr. Chairman. If the contract is for personal services, the following requirements must also be met for an employee to qualify for an exemption under twenty B. Bullet point one, the contract will be performed outside the normal working hours of the first position. Bullet point two, the services performed pursuant to the contract are not part of the employee's duties in the first job. And third bullet point, the board of selectmen approved the exemption of my interest in this, in this section. Any compensation for services through this grant shall be reported on a ten ninety-nine miscellaneous format at the end of the year as non-employee compensation, which includes services performed that are not salary, wages, or tips paid by the employer. I respectfully request the board approve the exemption of my interest from section twenty B. So I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the twenty B exemption on the ba, on, on the, on the grounds.
He needs to sign it, right? The chair will sign it?
Yeah.
With the chair, and I'll second that motion.
With the, uh, chair signing it, approved. It's just a company, alright. One you can keep.
And did ethics give you that in writing?
Yes.
Because, I mean, I believe you, but it has to be in our records.
Yeah. In fact, I, I copied you all on the response-
It's not the first time the town has done this.
Oh, no.
So it's typical.
Because I remember we had to do this with Chief Malali, with, with, with Brian Malali, doing work for the town.
I've, uh, I emailed you all, all of the responses from, from Ethics, didn't I?
I don't have the app, I just forwarded over what I need. Okay.
I didn't get it, Joe.
What's that?
I didn't get it.
Nope.
Oh, wait, I didn't, I don't have it, see, I'm at the job.
Do you have the app?
I- I have a separate inbox just for slack men's, where you-
Isn't your regular?
Like, just, this is now my Millville tablet.
My Millville tablet?
Yeah, I had way too much stuff.
Too many Charlotte?
Yeah.
Too many emails?
Yeah, you got that right.
Too much paper to carry.
But you have it, yes?
You have it?
I mean, I have it.
Okay, and you said you had a copy of it also, Trish, okay.
As long as we have it.
As long as we have it.
For record.
Here's, here's, uh, here's a copy of, uh, section twenty A and B. Want me to start reading this?
What, the opinion? No.
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 No. I can't even see the font from here. It's so tiny. I, I trust you, Joe.
That one's-
Two sixty-eight.
Your inquiry?
My inquiry.
That the one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not easy, I hear, it's very small. Oh, crap.
Oh, I did see that, now that you say my-
Yeah, it's okay, I have it, uh-
Yeah.
Alright.
You did.
It didn't come from-
So we have it on, on the email, but-
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I, I, I got it, yeah.
Okay.
Good enough for me, yeah.
So it was made by Joe, seconded by John. I don't have any questions.
They're all on you guys.
All in favor?
All in. Thing, and a second, just waiting for them.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so with that said, Joe, what's the next step?
The next step is to sign the, uh, the voucher.
And who signs the voucher? Chair?
Trish, help me on that, how many signatures do you need?
Are you reading the chairman of the G, G C C with another member, or are you getting the chairman of the board as well?
Okay, so I make a motion to have the chair sound, sign, sign the voucher.
So, Mr. Poser, this exemption allows Trish to be both a contractor and employee.
Yes.
That is correct.
And as you said in the, the email, she would need to receive a ten ninety-nine. But the town accountant has told us that that's not allowable. So that would be my-
Through the I R S, right.
You have the ethics.
Well, ethics saying different, so, and the paperwork's right there, so.
The, um, the thing is, as I understand it, there is, there are various forms of ten ninety-nines. And there's a miscellaneous category that is not specific to wages, but to, uh, things like bonuses, or, uh, kind of fever in the corporation.
Right.
Yeah.
Tips, tips of ten nine, uh, ten ninety-nines, those kinds of, incidental income to wages.
Okay. So, so has Marilyn seen this?
Well, you got a motion on the fourth one.
Wait a second.
Has, has Marilyn seen that? Well, just, you know?
Yep, I, I think it's two different issues, I think the ethics issue was completely separate from the I R S issue.
Right, but now it's just-
I did send, if I may, I did send an email to Marilyn last night, told her that I had spoken to my accountant, but she had certainly, and she knows between the I R S, she had recommended the ten ninety-nine as opposed to W two, because it is not my regular salary wage or tip.
Right, it seems to me it should be a ten ninety-nine.
Point being that in the end, I will still pay taxes on it.
Well, that's all the I R S is worried about.
Yeah, that's all they care about, they just want to get home.
Yeah.
Okay, do we, do we do-
Do this, um, Bob.
Do we need, do we need a vote on-
There was a motion for the chair to sign it, John and Bob.
I said all in favor, but nobody's-
Oh, we didn't hear you, go ahead, do it again.
All in favor?
Aye.
We've, uh, also, uh, Trish has filed a disclosure form, it's recommended by, uh, Ethics, and my, uh, disclosure form. Will be filed with the town clerk tomorrow.
Okay. So basically what you're saying, Joe, is all the work and all the paperwork is in order?
It is, uh, in order, as far as I know.
Okay.
I'd get surprised again, but, uh-
You've done everything Ethics recommended.
Do you have anything else for the chair to sign? Just that one? No, I, I, there's a voucher here someplace. I, I'm confused.
That one?
There's a voucher, right there.
I figured it looked just like that.
It's all together, where should it?
Yeah.
If I may, the chairman of the board has to sign my disclosure as well.
Yeah, okay. Oh, I did.
Good job.
Sign the-
Did you get a vote on that?
Oh, yeah, oops. Yeah, and so-
Motion is signed, to the chair to sign it.
Yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then, the voucher, is there two vouchers, or you'll just photocopy it?
Well, the voucher, the, the voucher there, that's, that, that's the original copy.
Yeah. There should be another one, another one.
It has my signature, it has a majority of the Green community-
Yeah, who's that? I can't read it.
Keith W.
Oh, Keith, alright.
And just, this is a point of information, uh, yesterday I received a, uh, email from Brian Faulkner. He wants to join the committee in the form.
Okay.
Mr. Boone, has he been sworn in yet?
He's been sworn in.
Last I came, it was good, okay, because I know last week he hadn't been.
No, Capazoli, he hasn't shown up.
Alright, was, uh, is, is there a, a new voucher to sign, or you, or might I just sign underneath?
Uh, you can sign anywhere, there, up here, this, over here.
Alright, there's three signatures, I don't know, so.
Okay, now we need to submit that. Is it an invoice?
Here's the invoice right here.
That, we, we keep looking at that there, is that, uh, we had, uh, in, in the search for, uh, grant administrator, we talked to at least two other people, signed, we signed Trish.
Okay.
And that's their statements and their quotes.
Okay. My question to you, Dan Joe, what else is there now for Trish to receive her money, the voucher? Is everything signed? No more paperwork?
No more paperwork.
No, um-
The voucher?
I may, I may- I may, I may.
Because she would be more than happy to do a, a special one.
Yep.
To get that done as soon as possible, because it's been delayed so long.
Okay.
Yeah.
Once everything is squared away.
And that's what I'm trying to find out.
I have the disclosure and the voucher I signed, and that's it.
That's it?
The exemption.
The exemption.
That's it.
There's the. There's the exemption. Where's the signature for the disclosure? Oh, I had it, now I lose it. Employee signature. Voucher. I know. Yeah. Maybe I missed the first page.
Yeah, I think.
Nope.
It's a disclosure.
It's a disclosure. And the signature, hers is there. I don't think, usually it's just the employee that sounds, signs a disclosure, all right?
Yeah, that's probably, yeah.
Yeah, because there's no signature, for me, only the employee signature.
Second page.
Huh?
Second page of the disclosure. On my.
Yeah.
Not on the chief's, and I don't believe this one on Joe's disclosure.
Because you're receiving the money.
A different, a different number in the law, yeah. Different, it's a bunch of different forms. So, we have a vote for the exemption and the voucher. Can I just have a vote for the authorize the chair to sign the disclosure?
Yep, we did.
We did.
Joe made it, John seconded it, five ayes. Doing my duties as a.
Okay, Trish.
That wasn't for the voucher?
I don't see my signature.
No, voucher was John Laura, Bob Baker.
Sorry. So, here's.
That's it. That's it.
Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
Now, where's the, the, the exemption?
It's just on this letter.
Oh, just sign the letter?
Well, actually, we voted to approve the exemption, so we don't even have to sign the letter.
All right.
Yeah, I have, you have it.
The only problem with all this paperwork, it quits us in jeopardy of meeting our project deadlines. Um, we're going to work like crazy to get those done, so that we can go to phase two and start to participate for competitive grants. You know, I'd like to thank Trish for.
All right, we're.
Doing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh. Is that it, Joe? Yeah, Trish, you want a copy of, you need any copies of these?
No, I have copies of the exemptions, the letter, and I think we just have to pass the voucher on to Marilyn.
You may just want to keep a copy of all of that for your files. Well, with the signatures, though.
Oh, okay.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Yeah.
I would just make a copy. Then you have a copy of what we have.
And the exemptions and the letter.
Ethics coming out?
Right.
As I mentioned earlier, the, the project manager from the audience, he here sometime this week, he's trying to get in tomorrow, but it's not enough notice for me to make arrangements to get into the elementary school. Walk the grounds, I'll make the people nervous. So, I'm probably, uh, going to schedule that for, for, uh, Wednesday. And we'll, we'll be visiting all the buildings. Preslethruss will be exterior lighting. Um, we have some of the materials available, so as soon as they can start working. We've got to finish phase one by October.
Okay.
That includes weatherization and buildings and that kind of thing.
Yep.
Did you, I assume you contacted the school and said you were going to be up there?
Well, I didn't get that message until after five.
Oh.
School was closed.
Yeah, just make sure you contact them.
Yeah. All right, thank you all.
Mm-hmm.
You're welcome.
Evening is coming, I'm going to be shoving with paper.
All right, now you got the town governance that you asked?
Yeah, town governance.
Does, um, Marilyn just need a copy of the voucher?
I think they signed the voucher and it's.
The voucher's here.
There.
Okay, so Marilyn will get it?
Yep.
We'll go with her voucher, right?
Yep.
The governance piece, um. Board, whoever's still bearing with us and watching, I'm going to explain, or state my definition of governance and how it applies to this board. Governance is the establishment of policies and the continuous monitoring of their proper implementation by the members of the governing body of an organization, which is the board selection. It includes the mechanisms required to balance the powers of the members with the associated, with the associated accountability and their primary duty of enhancing the prosperity and validity, viability of the organization. Basically, gentlemen and ladies, um, that, that's our job, government, establish policy and government. I, I had here a lot of projects, including that one seventy one center. That, uh, it's been going on for two years. There are highway issues, there are a number of infrastructure issues that we need to address. And the only way that I perceive that we can get these things done, without going back into the nineteen thirties and going into a receivership, where we're losing property values and tax burden on residents and increase, is increasing. Uh, we need to make changes, it's as simple as that. And going back to that earlier discussion when we had that first board meeting, the fifth point, and I said we're going to get back to, was reorganizing town governance. And I, I think, you know, from those early April discussions, that, uh, the executive secretary recognizes that a lot of this, which would be required going forward, is above and beyond, uh, your capability. So, my recommendation or solution would be, you know, put it in motion form, is to. Resolve our agreement, this board's agreement with the executive secretary. And hire the town, begin a search, to hire a town manager. With a credentialed individual.
A town manager?
I don't think you want to say town, a town administrator. Yeah, manager falls under a different.
Yeah. The town administr- credentialed town administrator. And that's, that'd be my motion.
I'll second that. I think I've, I've, um, agreed with those statements in previous meetings and, and I definitely second that.
What's, uh. So, what's, what's the?
Discussion. End vote.
So, where are we going to go forward tomorrow morning with this?
Well, you know.
You know, where?
It, it, a lot depends on how the Mrs. Crawford feels about, about this. She can take. Uh, you know. She's got ninety days if we vote. Uh, part of her initial proposal was to, um. Go to the front office as sort of a business secretary or a office manager. But I think we, we need professional administrators in town to help us through.
I agree. I thought it was, I thought it was a sign that, that we had a different, a few proposals for the office change when we started looking at the budget. I actually was one who said, we don't need July first, we can go October. I think, I think it's a good thing. I expressed my concerns then at the time about the rate of pay for that office position, which we can always engage in conversation, depending on how this vote goes, but, um. Yeah, I think, um, you know. I think it's been laid out. It's, it's, I think Finance seemed to think that it was a good idea.
Yes, they did.
And I think with some of the things coming before us, I think it's a good idea. I still do, so. Change is difficult, but.
No, I was, I was in agreement with it before, but Finance also said, we, where are we going to get the money?
We might just have to restructure it for this year and see what it looks like. I mean, we don't have to make the big jump. We can make a, you know, a little leap this year, but I think we also need to acknowledge that. Yeah, that we're taking that step forward.
We need to look at the whole picture and then some.
We're not status quo, that we're taking that one step forward. We're getting a town administrator who's going to be able to handle those things that are a bit more difficult.
Again, repetitive, but, you know, I, I can't see kicking this cane down the road anymore.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion?
I, you know what?
That's my only, that's my only point.
So, I've missed the last two meetings in my.
Yeah.
Is that?
Well.
Because I'm.
I think it was more FinCom.
We were going to put it on a budget that way.
Okay.
We had a couple proposals. I think we got an email about that. It was a while ago, Bob, though.
It was actually Mrs. Crawford's recommendation about a couple of months ago. To, to move forward that way, and then, looking at the budget. Uh, we thought with the small change that we could afford to make this year, uh, would allow us to get, uh, more of our ducks in a row for the next change.
Let, let me say a couple of things. That, you know, I'm, I'm really, uh, impressed how Finance Committee has worked in forming this budget. Um, there's going to be money added in the budget for stabilization. It's been nego- negotiated the request for additional contribution down. So, we're going to have, as required of the Finance Committee, we've got a town meeting with a balanced budget.
And savings.
And savings. As well as some, some capital items funded.
Mm-hmm.
The, the, the problem is, is that we've been spending one-time cash to, we don't have the continuous revenue income, you know, other than tax, uh, living.
Okay, I'm, I'm all, like, I'm.
So, you know, the Finance Committee, you know, went around, they were balancing the budget with pocket change.
Hmm?
So, for this year, I think. We're in a good position to start moving forward, and we've got to start to make change.
Okay, and I could have missed it, I could have. So, the end game of this change, this is going to create more revenue for the town, or it's going to, it's going to?
Well, what it, what it might do is that we've got all these open, open, uh, issues that are unresolved, but what do you think, you know, the property values on, uh. Province Street in Hawkins.
When it was proposed, it was proposed almost, it wasn't in, on paper, but I think it was proposed more as like a business manager type, someone who's really going to grasp the financial issues, along with the municipal issues that we have. And, um, work on those, and be the administrator.
And, and no legal issues, because it's going to be more educated, you know, more broader what's going on.
There were some questions about hours and things like that, but I think those are things we'd have to find out. We'd have to see what the pool of candidates, we'd have to make up a job description. Um, it's a little more detailed than what we currently have, more specific.
You know, do we have, do we have a job description? Well, that would be part of this, there are job descriptions available.
Mm-hmm.
Well, just what our expectation would be, what, what is?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Is, is the committee, we need, would do that?
We would, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, one man only, that doesn't do that. But in the workshop, with, with the, the board, we could determine those requirements.
Okay.
But we see, you know, we, we've got to look beyond the first and, and third Mondays of every month. You know, we have issues, land, when we, when you talk to attorneys, ask them about land use legislation and, and law. Uh, we've, we've got issues on Fair Street, where developments, the town is actually being extorted. To, to build a residential development. But, and across the street from that area, there is, uh. One of the things that's hurting this town is that there are fires and there are a lot of lost records.
Mm-hmm.
So, we, we don't have a lot of clear titles to properties. Unowned owners. Oh, stuff we need to look at and fix.
Okay. So, there's no question, there's a lot of stuff that doesn't get done around here, because we can't find positions in, in our business office, you know? We've asked for a couple hours and can't get done. So, for me, you know, this, I'm, I'm, I wasn't ready for that, so, just, what is, what's the net net of what we're doing? What, what will we, is there a way to measure it?
The, the net net on this is that, I, one measure I have, I can see, by looking around, my property value in six years is increased thirty percent. I look at the school statistics. I look at the school's statistics. Last year we had twenty-five births, new births in town. So five years from now, that's a kindergarten class. If that trend continues, with six grades in, at the elementary school, that's a hundred and eighty kids. The school is both over four hundred.
Okay.
Okay, so we're gonna figure something out about that.
Okay, I, I don't, I don't disagree for a second. We need people to wanna come here, I get that.
And the other piece of it is we've gotta look beyond our own borders here in terms of, uh, grant availability. You know, there's, there are things that we kind of, as an example, uh, let, let's talk about addressing infrastructure, okay? I think the Green, uh, Community Initiative's gonna save operational costs, save money operationally, but as an example, I'm gonna, we can't do much about this building. The next building on, on the list I have in my head is Fire Station Two. You know, decommissioning, I mentioned it, didn't I mention it earlier, decommissioning the ladder, getting out of Fire Station Two, it's cost savings, um, grant money to re-roof the, uh, Fire Station One, get all the engines in there, um, make the, the heating system more efficient. It's cost savings, so we, we have to look at, you know, those kinds of things. And, and just participating in, in, in the grant side of it, there are, there are lots of opportunities. They're there, they're out there. The police chief has received, uh, turnout gear.
Yeah, yeah.
So we can do that, you know, community, uh, community grants, CPA grants they call them, community preservation grants. We need to get, uh, aggressive in those areas. And we're gonna make the town nicer, we're gonna have, uh, you know, we can get some zoning in here, get some small businesses on Main Street and Central Street, but we're gonna fix the roads, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, change the impression in the town.
Like the walkway, that's gonna be a big impact in this town.
You know, I think, I think, you know, we, we have multiple conversations about Valley Tech and what Valley Tech was when, when, you know, at least Roland and I were younger. 'Cause I'm not even sure if it was around when you guys were younger, but, you know, how, how... Just saying, just putting it out there. But anyways, um, and how he's taken that and what he's done with that and the progress with, with his, um, you know, his ambition and his, and his knowledge and his, and his push. Why, why can't we have that here? Why can't, why can't we have it here? We can, why, so why don't we, why don't we try to find someone invested in ambition who's gonna say, "I'm applying for this grant, I'm doing this, I wanna do this, this, this should be your next turn."
He has tools.
Listen, and, and that's, this is great, this is all great information through the process.
And that's... Yeah, and that's what I, and I say this quite often, like Millville deserves better. They deserve better from us, they deserve better from our departments, they deserve more, they deserve better. And, and why not find, and, you know, I mean, we have to look for it, you have to get the applicants, you gotta put it out there, but why can't we try to find that spark? That's going to ignite what we need in the town instead of just status quo, doing, putting out this fire, taking care of this, doing this. Why don't we have someone who's like boom, 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 you know, you know, lack of better words, but who's just doing the job and, and that they're a step ahead of us. Like, I'm sure Dr. Fitzpatrick is a step ahead of that whole school committee, he might be five ahead of them, and I don't, no offense to any of those school many, but he is just driven.
Yep.
And if we can get something or a piece like that here to just help us move forward, then why not? Wha- why, why not sit back?
We, we, uh, need to also stimulate civic engagement in town. It seems like a tired statement. But, you know, I've received phone calls, volunteering now to get involved, but people gotta show up. It's really disappointing with, uh, town election, a hundred and nineteen, we've got twenty-three hundred and seventy registered voters, five percent showed up to vote. So does that say, who cares? It's, people sitting here that care something about the town, but you get it, put it to action.
Right.
We're gonna put, this would have to be put on the warrant, I mean, on the...
No, no.
Into the budget. We're gonna put it in the budget.
No, we would, um, we have our budget for what the office is. We could ask FinCom to switch some numbers around, or we could, um, I believe it's, we can do it within department, can't we?
Correct.
Yep, into department, you can go from between salaries and between expenses. So we, we have some play with, might have to stay within our budget area and work it until we have a, a strong grasp on it, but it's there.
'Cause our, our first plan was only two days a week, but that's not gonna cut...
Well, this, I mean, we're gonna have to engage in a bigger conversation, but we do have our annual in November, so if we start working with it... I'm sorry, special, so, I mean, we could also meet with FinCom in the interim and say, "This is where we're going, what can we get, how can we restructure it now?" You know, if we find that we can't do it with what's in our budget at this point, um, we could try to, or you could bring it to, you could make the adjustment on the town floor, but I, I'm not one for rushing.
Nope.
And I would not say to change it on the town floor. I'd say do our research, do our information, and then later change it for the special town meeting if we need to, and work with FinCom on where that money would come from if we need that money.
Yep.
But we can play within the department until then, and it's beginning of the year.
Just that, we have quite a bit of work to do, we need to make, um, goals, you know, objective, what we expect out of a person.
Mm-hmm.
You know, a ladder or whatever, how you wanna for it, I mean, none of that's been, kind of, on the first phase of it. We've got a spot somewhere like Joe said, and I think it's a good opportunity, and I think we should move forward on that, but there's a lot involved in that moving forward. This is just the first step.
Yep.
Is that it, Dave?
Well, we have a, um, I don't think we can vote again.
So this first step is discovering, but what it, is that what this is?
Well, this would allow, would release us from Helen's contract with ninety Ds out, and then depending on what happens, it gives us our time to set things up and do what we need to do.
Now we have a motion.
Yep.
And then a second, I think, to vote.
All in favor?
Um...
Alright.
Alright.
I'm just gonna hang back another... Hmm? I don't, I don't, I don't feel like I'm going to.
No name, no, just abstention?
Um, yeah, I'm abstention, can I get that?
Yep.
Do whatever you want, it's the paper.
Thank you.
So, uh, four ayes and one abstention, right?
Yep. Is that it?
I don't think anything, just a public, last public forum.
Final public forum. Uh, next regular meeting is Monday, May eighteenth at seven P M, and right now we'll do signatures and then we'll adjourn.
How about the logo?
Yeah.
I can't copy, it's always different. I just hope I'm on the right line.
Did you hear, did you hear?
No, that was just there. It's just a notice for Wednesday's meeting.
Deal would it be?
Huh?
How big of a deal would it be?
Any? Big deal, we gotta get permission from historical. Gotta have permission from historical to make a hole in that roof, that's sealed.
You have to make a hole, you just go...
You can't screw nothing into it without Margaret's permission, huh?
What did you wanna put?
A power fan.
Couple of power fans, like one unit and one unit? You have to add more?
Well, you don't really need that smoke detector, right? Just a light there.
Yeah, right, okay.
Election markers.
I think that guy at work wanted to take the P I D out. Wanted to dig the P I D.
That's it.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Who wants to take the second? Terry, can I have it?
All in, all in favor?
Alright, alright.